All right.
I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless Council meeting for April the 12th, 2021. And Councilmember Spahnhols will lead the pleasure of allegiance.
Of everybody would please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Announcements. First of all, I would like to make everyone aware that council did meet for a short executive session prior to this meeting to discuss possible litigation matters. Also, under seminars and conferences, council members, please be sure and respond if you're going to be able to make it to the ALAM concert, ALAM conference this year. I'm not sure what that deadline is, but sooner than later would be, would be good. Sometimes they do fill up. The next one, CTIF grant, which is the Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund, is a grant that we, that we, the town received. I'd like to give thanks to Senator Williams for helping us secure $100,000 to revitalize our tennis courts and our soccer fields. So thank you so much, Senator Williams. Next is the Governor's Award. This is, this is the Governor's Award for Local Government Excellence. And this award is to recognize municipalities and local governmental officials for their dedication and commitment to strengthening their communities and better serve their residents. It is given on behalf of the Governor, the Department of Community Economic Development, and Secretary Dennis Daven. Our category was information technology. And the award reads, quote, "McCandless underwent a communication overhaul, adding new channels of information sharing and increased shared information, including a town website enhancements, new Facebook page, YouTube channel, a new savvy citizen cellphone texting app, and the upcoming launch of both a town Twitter account, that was before we launched our account, and a town television channel," end quote. This has been an ongoing work in progress. From the beginning, when Georgie Lycar livestreamed the meeting on her phone, up until the launching of our Twitter account by our junior council member and all the people in between that, that made this happen. I would like to thank John Burdowski, who is all things communication to the town, for his tireless work and suggestions and changing and rearranging and updating things, as well as Bob Grimm, who has been so supportive and, and put in a ton of time and work on this. Also, our Technology Committee that is chaired by Marcy Pearson. I'd also like to thank Brian Sullivan and his team who submitted this nomination to the DCED. But most of all, I'd like to thank the citizens of this town who demanded to be informed because they care about what's going on in this community. This was an amazing collaboration, and I'm very proud of the town with, for getting this particular award. Next, the EAC and the Small Business Capstone Team wants to hear from local McCandless small business. Please fill out our survey, which is on the town website. Also, the EAC sponsored roadside cleanup gathered right at 100 bags of garbage. We'd like to thank Boy Scout troops 344 and 935, as well as Representatives Mercer and, excuse me, McCurry and Williams, excuse me, the Democratic Committee, Public Works, for picking up all the bags that we left on the sides of the roads and our police department for supplying some protection on some of those busy roads. Also today, on KDKA on the Marty Griffin Talk Show at 10:04, you can go back and hear this if you go on their site. Lynn Atman, one of our chief litter getters, was interviewed and there was a nice little segment there on, on litter. So if anyone would like to, to hear that. This year's paving program is on the town website. So if you'd like to check and see if maybe your, your road's looking a little shabby and it's going to be done this year, you can check on there. Also, remind everyone that if you want to sign up and to speak today, please, repeating what RJ said, just as a repetition, please put your name, your address in the chat box. And so we'll call on you during public comment. Okay, before I call for a motion to approve the minutes as submitted to council, are there any changes or amendments that need to be submitted for the minutes? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Okay. Councilmember Spahnhols has made a motion to accept the council minutes from March 22nd, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Woods. Okay, again, any questions or comments, changes? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as submitted indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, minutes are accepted. Now's the time for public comment. RJ will send you a request for you to turn on your microphone and in the order that she received your name for comment, and we will move forward with our public comment now.
You know, we've got quite a few folks turned in to watch the meeting, but I don't have anyone that has signed up for public comment.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, thank you. All right, next are reports of committees, reports from the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Yep. Madam President, we have two items tonight. First is to review the checklist number three dated March 1st, 2021 to March 31st, 2021 totaling $973,445.12, submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website. So didn't know if anybody had questions for Trish. Hearing none. The next item is to review the monthly financial summary and dashboard report. Of course, these are included in your packet, and Trish is here to answer any questions if we have them.
I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have. We are performing consistently compared to prior year.
Any questions? No. Trish, when will we wrap up 2020?
Working on it. It should be here in the next few weeks.
Okay. Very good. Hearing no other questions, Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Zoning Committee, we have a couple of motions coming up today for approval, excuse me, of subdivision and consolidations. All that information is in your packet. Also, some things that haven't come forward yet have a lot of changes. I hope everyone is following those as they're making their way back and forth to the Planning Commission. That's all I have. Public Safety Committee.
Is Ryan Hawk on in case we have any questions? I know there's two things I wanted to point out. One, in his report, he, he has a write-up about David McChesney helping a, maybe a mother, it looks like, who looks like she suffered some medical issues. But I wanted to congratulate and say thank you so much for his actions because he was very heroic in saving the lady and getting her out of the car and the young child. So, is Ryan on?
I am, Carolyn. Thank you for pointing that one out. He did, he was able to come to assist her with her issues. I won't go into all of them, but yes, he, he, he did a good job for us.
Anyone have any questions for Ryan? Anything else? Nope. Okay, and then that concludes the public safety report.
Public Works.
The report was included in your packet. I believe Jeff is on vacation this week, so if you have any questions, I'll do my best to probably defer to Mr. Grimm. That concludes my report.
Okay, Services Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. The Fire Marshal's report for February and the permanent report for March of 2021, as well as the Code Enforcement's Violation Complaint Statistics Report for the month of March, included in council's packets. If anyone has any questions about either of those things, I believe that Fire Marshal Stack is here. And Mr. Grimm, did you want to say anything, just a brief thing about the Volunteer Fire Department meeting with the Cranberry Head of Emergency Services?
If, if you haven't already had the chance to look at that presentation that Chief Gearing made regarding the Cranberry Model for Strategic Planning and Implementation, I would encourage you to do that. It was a good, good presentation and was very, to me, insightful in terms of what one community did to address their staffing issues throughout the, the town. And I think it would provide a lot of food for thought and hopefully provides a launching pad for discussions of what will work here in McCandless. But overall, it was a very good presentation, great follow-up to the strategic planning session that was held the end of February. And again, hopefully it will lead to ongoing discussions between the town and the fire departments and among the fire departments themselves on how best to address fire service in the, in the town moving forward.
Thank you. Were there any other questions about any of the submitted reports? Hearing none, that concludes my report.
Recreation Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to let you know that our committees involved in recreation and culture in our town have been very busy working on trying to get back to some more community involvement throughout our summer months. Hopefully, we will be able to gather soon. But just to let everyone know, we are always looking for volunteers to work with these events and to help in planning. And there's an extra special need because we think we may still need to be doing some virtual work. And we'd love to, if anybody has interest in helping the, the Activities Advisory Committee or any of the other recreation committees work on setting up some more virtual type of programming, we'd love to hear from you. And I also want to thank the Public Works Department for the great report on opening up all of our parks, too. It's exciting that we can start using them again. Thank you. There's any questions, please let me know. Conclude the report.
All right, moving, moving on to Old Business. Continued discussion on the UPMC Banner Ordinance Amendment Application. RJ?
Yep, let me just bring up the folks that are here for this. One second. I have sent a microphone and camera request. And, okay, got one.
We have Doug, we have Doug Donaldson and Bill Clano from Clano Design.
Okay.
Hello, everybody.
Hi. So we had your presentation at our last meeting. Was there anything that you needed to add?
We simplified the presentation to make it a little bit more graphical. And we also included banner codes in other locations throughout the Pittsburgh area. So if you want to pull up what we did this time, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Give me just one second. That should be on the screen.
We wanted to show examples of banners that UPMC has done in other locations. So you can get just an idea of the low density of banners we are proposing. And the same code would apply to other clients as well, anyone else in the borough. On, so we're looking at whole amount of banners on page one. Let's go to the next page as well. And we're talking about wall-mounted banners, whether they be parallel to the wall, like the top image flush to the wall, or perpendicular to a structure or wall, like the bottom image, where we have banners coming out of the canopy in front of the hospital. And also ground-mounted banners, that would be very temporary for something like a flute shot clinic. So basically, we were looking at each one of these as an individual, the ground-mounted banner and wall-mounted banner, and then back to the pole-mounted banner. So let's return to the previous page. And here we're showing the banners at no closer than 100 feet apart in a typical parking lot. And again, as I mentioned, off to the right are banner codes in other locations throughout the city and how they allow banners and, and how we're very similar in terms of square footage and locations.
All right, anything else?
Nope, that's, I believe it's that.
All right. Are there any comments by council? I can say that I have received more texts and emails about this. This and chickens probably have been my top in number, total number of emails that I have gotten about a topic. And I have to say, everything that I, everyone that I got said, we really do not need more signs. So that, that's the feedback that I have gotten. And, yeah, yes, Councilmember Smith.
I was just going to say, from my point of view, you know, I, I don't have a problem with any of them, except for maybe the teardrop signs, just because of worries like we have with other, that we've gone over before with, you know, them ending up in the street. I, I take it they're a whole lot more sturdy than, than some of those other signs that we worry about. You know, I always kind of come from a position of folks should be allowed to do on their property as they wish. And the, you know, the light pole signs in particular, I don't think really cause any problems. And particularly even if it's limited to institutional or institutional and commercial, or, you know, you don't want to, obviously, those wouldn't go in a residential neighborhood. But that's my two cents on, on the sign proposal.
Any other comments? Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Woods.
I feel we're getting really close to this overhaul of our code. And so I prefer at this point to just wait and get into a better discussion, include this in the bigger picture for what we want for our code.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Spahnhols.
I would just say briefly that I agree with Councilmember Woods. Not only, and I think I've said this before, that I think that there are many ordinances that we have in our town that have not been updated since the 1970s. This may be one. And while maybe some of these types of signs may be okay, maybe not. I also have gotten only negative comments from constituents on these signs. But if we're ever going to look at signage, I would rather do it holistically because while a banner sign might be something we might agree to in the future, we might want to reduce the size of our pole signs, something of that nature. So I think that we should wait.
Any other council member like to speak? Councilmember Clunin?
I would like to say I'm in agreement with Councilperson Woods and Spahnhols in, in holding off on reviewing this. I am sure that the designers with the UPMC, it would be very attractive and tasteful signage. But, you know, we do need to keep in mind that there are other people in our community that may not share the same design talent. And we need to be sure that if we allow for one, we allow for all. And we want to make sure that if we are approaching these, this type of signage, that it is something that would be available and usable by everyone in the community if we do allow it. And I'd rather see that weight and be thought out a little bit more than just looking at it at this one particular institutional location. Thank you.
Any other comments by Councilmember, Councilmember Terrell?
I think I agree with Councilmembers Woods, everyone. I too have gotten a lot of emails, and a lot of it's not really that, you know, UPMC is putting the signs up. It's what does it do to the rest of the community? Like, what's going to pop up on McKnight Road? What's going to pop up over, you know, in a, in a shopping center? So I think that holistic, you know, view is probably best.
Any other comments? Councilmember Swager.
I was going to say, I would like to, I completely agree. I think we should hold off and wait. And if we were to add these, and I think that we should really consider the maintenance and, you know, you see signs are faded or, you know, they get torn in the wind. I think there's just a lot of those things we need to take in consideration of maintenance and visibility and that kind of good stuff. So I would say put it on hold, too.
Okay. Are there any further comments before we move on?
Bill, do you want to add any comments?
I would like temporary approval of the pole-mounted banners while you continue to study this. And it can be a satellite experiment for you and for you to get further feedback.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments? All right, then. We will move on to continue discussing on the submission of a grant application for Walpark Trail. Bob, do you want to?
Sure. I just, just wanted to follow up on the information that I provided you in your folder and the memo that I put together for you. Just wanting to make sure direction to go here. Again, my, my feeling at this point, while there's still some questions to the type of trail that we're going to have and the overall engineering involved, my recommendation would be to hold off on the DCNR grant and then apply through the Greenways and Trails Program with a deadline of May 31st. The grant match is, puts us in a better position, I believe financially, and also provides us with a little bit more lead time than we have at this point.
So for the citizens that are attending, the match for the Greenways Trail Grant Program is only 15% for up to $250,000, where the other, the DCNP grant is a 50% match. So potentially would save the town quite a bit of money. So that's what we're, that's, that's the point here of applying for the other. Council, any discussion from council members? Councilmember Spahnhols.
Madam President, I'm sorry, but I have to disagree with how you have articulated that.
Oh, okay.
Only because, look, I am, I'm a big, I'm a big advocate for grant funding. That's one of the reasons, and the council is as well. That's one of the reasons that we actually now have a grant writing, grant submission subcommittee, so that we can do this better. I just have a different point of view. The way that I see this is that there is already money in the town's approved budget to get this community improvement project underway. Regardless of the matching funds requirement, any grant money we receive is less than what we would otherwise have to spend, even if the match component from the funding entity is less. I think that Mr. Grimm pointed this out, and I agree, that both the DCNR and the Greenway Grant Programs are highly competitive, meaning that there only may be a small chance that we could receive others either. And in fact, last year, we were denied approval for our DCNR grant request. So it would simply be, my opinion, given the likelihood or unlikelihood that we may receive either, certainly probably not both of these grants, that we not give up an opportunity to pursue both grants since the DCNR grant is already written and could be submitted in short order. And we still have until May 31st to also apply for the Greenways Grant, which is a larger grant as well, and could move us beyond just engineering costs. So that is just my opinion. You know, I'm fine with whatever council thinks is the most prudent thing to do, but that is my opinion.
All right. Other opinions? Councilmember Terrell.
Can you stack the grants? Can we get them both, Bob?
I don't believe that we can use both for the same purpose because of the funding sources there. But we could potentially, my suggestion would be that we would probably apply for the same thing for both. The other option would be if we applied for the engineering through the DCNR grant, we, and if we, we went with a compacted soil option, we may well be able to do that construction work for the 250 with not having a quote or an estimate yet from the engineer. So we could go after grant funds through the Greenways and Trails for the construction, engineering one, construction on the other, and have a complete project. That, off the top of my head, that's one idea to pursue.
So if we get a grant that's 50%, it's, that covers 50% of what number? Because I'm looking at the...
It would, I, my suggestion would be that you would apply for engineering for the one and, and construction for the other.
So is that the design line item, or there's the, is it all of these that there's the topo study, the utilities? Like what? How much? I guess that's what I'm trying to.
Is it, is it not half of the 70,000, Bob?
Well, the permitting would be 70,000. You, you would be at about, yes, you would be at about 35,000 to 37,000.
Is half.
Which will be the grant match.
Right, that's the half.
That's the half.
But they also, they need to do these other things, don't they, Bob? The boundary topo survey, the, the design part for 132, the white lines delineation, the permitting.
Yeah, in, in this case, we wouldn't, there, the engineering estimate, the gateway presented was 75,000 net incorporated, and all of those features. This, what you see in front of you was from the comprehensive plan.
Ah, my apologies. Okay.
Yes. But Gateway's estimate was 75,000, so you would be about 37.5 for your match.
And that's shovel-ready, like with their design in place?
Yeah, what they would be designed to become shovel-ready.
Thank you.
So I'm, and, and maybe I misunderstood this, Mr. Grimm, but I didn't think we could apply for both of those. I thought it was one or the other.
No, I think we could. I think we could. We'll just have to be careful in how we word it.
Okay.
And, you know, the best case, worst case scenario is we would end up with both of them at half a stick, but... Best case, worst case scenario is we would end up with both of them at half thick, but. Unless we, we have two different aspects of the project that we apply for.
I believe your recommendation was to apply for the Trails Greenways. What, what was the rationale behind that and not applying for the other one then? I'm sorry, I.
The, the rationale was that I had only gotten feedback from a handful of the council members regarding the type of trail. That we were going to be looking at. And, you know, part of my logic was that we may well be able to apply for the entire project. If we. Had a, used a compacted soil approach as a first phase for the, the trail. And just go after the full grant then.
And that would, that would make the trail non-ADA.
That's correct.
Accessible, okay, okay.
But it would be aligned in a design fashion that it could be converted to ADA accessible in the future. When and if more funds became available, or if we were able to connect it to one of the other, you know, trail projects like Rachel Carson. So. It could be an interim, the right pathway, not potentially fully developed until future development occurred.
And it's, it would not be ADA accessible only because of the, the. Material that the trail is made of. As soon as it became, was constructed with a crushed limestone or gravel. It could, would be considered ADA accessible. So my thinking was that constructed compacted soil trail is the first step with the correct alignment. Then phase two, go back in for the crushed limestone. And split those costs over years as opposed to all at once.
Just for argument's sake though, couldn't you potentially also, cause whether, we might not get either of these grants. So we could, but hypothetically, we were so lucky to get both of these grants. We could focus the DCNR grant, which was originally contemplated on the engineering components of a plan. And we could focus the Greenways application on the actual construction development. Of a trail, probably, probably the compacted dirt. And in the very best case scenario, should we get both, which may be highly unlikely, we might have enough. Under the, under the Greenways Grant. We may have enough extra money to do the crushed limestone to actually complete the project out of the gate with the crushed limestone. That would make the path ADA compliant. So that's our very best case scenario. But our worst case scenario is that we get nothing. And we just have to decide whether to spend the money that we already budgeted in the budget for anything.
How much was that in the budget? What did we, what was, how much did we put in the budget?
$50,000.
How much?
$50,000.
Awesome. So if we pay the 37, which is half. 27, we don't have enough to match. Do we, do we have enough to match the, do 15? If we, if we got the full one, if things were perfect?
If everything was perfect, we would not have enough to match. Now, the realistic part of this. Is that given the timetable of the approvals, we would not. More than likely be doing any of these, this work in 2021. We would not really hear from the, about the DCNR grant until late in the year. And we would spend the rest of the fiscal year probably just handling the paperwork between DCNR and the town. And my not having received anything from Greenways and Trails. I would think that the timetable would be similar.
Any other council, councilmembers, Matt?
I, I just, I just might be looking at the, the wrong sheets and I can't find the one that I'm remembering. But so if it was just the compacted soil to, to just start there. What is the total cost of that project without taking into account any grants?
I've, I've made a request of the engineers for an estimate, but I've not received that yet. That's another.
Okay, so we, we don't have like a ballpark figure or anything that.
If, if I had to guess, and that's all it would be, take it for what it's worth. I would think that it would be at least around a third of the cost. Because you're mostly just clearing a trail and compacting earth, you're not buying relatively expensive materials and putting it down.
And, and what was the estimated total cost? You said it would be a third of?
I, I was basing that off of the original estimate that we received from Gateway, which was three quarters of a million dollars. That was for the crushed limestone. With some more permanent material along the stream beds where erosion might be an issue.
And does that include the engineering or is, would that be the?
That included the engineering.
That includes the engineering. So we're looking at like 250 with the potential for. 150 in matching funds, give or take. Maybe a little less, 140, because you said the first one's only like a 15% match rate.
Yes.
And that would be the one that would apply to the engineering, if, if we got both, best case scenario.
We, we can handle it whichever way the council chooses.
The 250 maximum, was it 250 maximum Greenways Grant, Bob? Was a 15% match. It is, it is the DCNR grant that, that what we're going to do for, for engineering, which was a 50% match. So if you look at 15% and 50% in those two, it would be. Most, you'd get, be getting most of the 250 from Greenways. And 37 from DCNR.
Well, the, the, the one can only apply to engineering. Well, I guess it would depend on how we worded it, right? But it only applies to either engineering or construction, right?
That would be my initial suggestion. I mean, I, I'm talking off the top of my head. This is going beyond the questions, what beyond what my, my email or my memo indicated.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments from councilmembers? All right.
Is, is there some direction? I mean, if. Thing was that if, if there is some indicate, if, if you want to follow my recommendation, that's fine. If you wanted to follow what Councilmember Spawnholes suggested, we would need to. Approve that resol, a resolution tonight to, which you had a copy in your folder.
Oh, all right. It just said continued discussion. It didn't say about a resolution.
I just, because I assumed, sorry, I assumed that we would be talking about moving forward with the other grant.
All right, is there a motion that a council member would like to make?
Well, I will make a motion because I'm the one that advocated for a particular approach. So I will do that, but having said that, I'm, I just want all of council to know that, you know, this is. I, I was just trying to bring to light the kind of the circumstances. So my motion, at the last meeting, we did have a motion that was passed to proceed to. Apply for the DCNR grant, which is due on Wednesday, but with the amount to be final determined. And I think that, I, I just want everyone to remember, because the original amount of the grant was at 75,000. We could have made it less. But I would. For tonight's purposes, and so you guys can either offer an alternative motion or not. I would move to submit the grant application to the DCNR, which is due on Wednesday. In the amount of $75,000, that should be dedicated to engineering for a trail at Walpark. And I further move as part of the same motion to put together the paperwork documentation to apply for the Greenways. The Greenways Grant in the amount of 250,000 at 15% matching. To focus specifically on actual construction of this trail in a design that is final determined by council.
All right, does everyone have that? Okay, so overview, make sure that I understand is apply for both grants in their entirety. The DCNR for engineering and the Greenways for construction. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Swager? Okay, any other comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead, David.
I think the, the last time we had, when we were talking about the engineering costs. You know, we were thinking that maybe those would come down substantially if we were looking at one of the cheaper options like the compacted soil. Is that, did that not turn out to be the case?
A big part of that engineering cost was permitting. For, that would be necessary regardless of the, the type project. I'm still trying to work them down on that number and I will continue to work them down on that number. But I don't think it's going to come down substantially.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that, that, to me, that's a. It's a big spend for, for something that, as you put it, is a want instead of a need. And I'm sure, you know, the budgeted amounts, I'm sure there's other projects in the town that, that could benefit from that budgeted amount. But that's me.
Amount was budgeted for Walpark in the approved budget that was approved by all of council. The $50,000.
Right. But I mean, now we're going above that just for the engineering, so.
I, I do agree with you and I think that again, I'm, I'm sorry for talking so much, but this is my EAC. And this is stuff that I, I think I'm the council member most familiar with. That even should we apply for 75,000 and we get approved for 75,000. It's still completely within our control and I totally agree with you that we should try to spend less than 75,000. If we only spend 30,000, then our matching is only 15,000. So because we've applied for the maximum amount of the grant for engineering, does not mean that we have to spend it. Does that make sense? We only, we only get matching for what we actually spent.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I understand that. I, I don't know, I think there was a discussion last time about, you know, how that. May not sit too well with the grant program, you know, going forward. You know, if we apply for an amount, but then we don't end up using it. I, I, I remember there being a discussion around that of there being.
I think the biggest concern, because I've been following some of this stuff up, is that if we applied for it and then rejected it. That would be bad. That would be inappropriate, but all of these numbers are always estimates when you apply for the grants. So it's not unusual for there to be a lesser number that you only seek the, you know, seek matching for.
Yeah, I, just to, to follow up. Councilmember Smith, the, if we applied for 75,000 for engineering. And the actual engineering cost only came in at 60,000, nobody's going to hold that against us. But they, it doesn't look good if we apply for it, we receive a grant and then we never use it at all. As Councilmember Spawnholes said.
Mike, you had something you wanted to say?
They were, it was answered. Thank you.
All right, any other council members? Have any comments? Yes, Councilmember.
I just want to say I am in support of the proposal and the motion made by Councilwoman Spawnholes on this. I do see this as more, more than just a want for our community. I see this as a, a need for outdoor space for all of our residents. And is, and as we grow and as this town changes. I do think this type of facility, this type of recreation opportunity is something that draws people to our town. And makes them want to stay here. So I do see it in, as an investment in our future, not just as a want. I'm in support.
Any other comments?
I will say I feel a tinge anxious about this. And the reason that I do is because we still have a lot of unanswered questions about. Just a lot of things with the pandemic and with other expenses. We have a lot of. Some of our authorities, they're, you know, everybody needs money and I love the parks. Nobody loves the parks more than me. Nobody loves the AC more than me. But I do feel a little bit nervous. With a big project like this, when we have an ambulance authority. And some other, our firefighters that are all having some shortfalls and maybe looking to us. So it does make me a little nervous, I will say that. That's what I have to say about that. And I know it was budgeted for, right? But everything that's in the budget does not have to be spent also. You know, that money can be held back, right? So for something else. And we may not want to do that and that's fine. You know, I love trails, I love the park, but like I said, I'm just a little bit nervous about it because of all the other stuff that's in flux, so. Any other comments? Okay, all right then, we have a motion, we have a second and we've had discussion. So all those in favor of applying for both grants, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Name?
Excuse me?
Name?
Okay. All right, so we'll do a roll call vote. Bob, are you?
I'm ready.
Okay, all right, um, go ahead.
Word two?
Aye.
Word three?
Aye.
Word four?
Nay.
Word five?
Aye.
Word six?
Aye.
Word seven?
Aye.
Word one?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Six, one, all right. All right, the, the next, before we make a motion on the suburban whitetail. I wanted to see if there were any additional comments or questions. Also, we have a recommendation from the EAC about it. Shelly, you can just give us a.
I'm sure you can just read it.
And if you want to read it, you can, you can just say whatever you want to do, it's fine, it's fine.
It's, it's pretty brief.
Okay.
Just to, um, it was in council's packets, but for the purposes of the, the public record. It reads, "The EAC recommends that the town of McCandless utilize suburban whitetail management to manage the deer populations on town properties. To more effectively manage the deer population throughout McCandless, we recommend that the town facilitate the introduction of suburban whitetail management to our institutional landowners such as UPMC Passavent." of suburban whitetail management to our institutional landowners such as UPMC Passavent, LaRoche University, and the North Allegheny School District as appropriate. Commercial landholders may also have appropriate areas and should be included in these efforts. Private landowners and homeowners associations could also aid in achieving deer management goals by allowing SWM access to appropriate properties. The town should ensure that the public is informed of their options. SWM should be encouraged to prioritize McCandless residents that wish to join their organization."
That's it. Okay, are any other council members that have any comments?
Madam President.
Councilmember Woods.
Thank you. I'm excited about the potential to work with suburban whitetail management. I think this is the right path to take. I just feel like we're putting the cart ahead of the horse a little bit without having our deer management plan presented to us yet, which may very well include working with suburban whitetail management. I would just like to see the plan and have some metrics for how we, where we are now and how we can measure whether they're successful.
All right, any other comments? All right, then. If there aren't any, then I will call if there is a motion to authorize an agreement between the town and suburban whitetail deer management LLC. Is there a motion?
I move, I move to authorize the council president, town manager, and town attorney to take actions necessary to enter into an agreement with suburban whitetail management LLC to establish a deer management program.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, councilmember Smith. Any other other further comment? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. I will send out the the plan that was put together by the subcommittee for the whitetail deer management to everyone there. You can look at it, see if there's anything else that you would like us, like us to do. This is was pretty much the two things that were recommended in it were this and the, but I'll send it out. And if we want to add some additional things. Our, I appreciate us moving forward with this. This gives the suburban whitetail hunters time to get this organized so that we can have a hunt this fall. So I appreciate you moving forward with that. Next is discussion on the revision of the chicken regulations and possible next actions. So RJ, we split these up and we made them into, go ahead, tell us.
Yeah, so um, most of the substance of the last draft that you saw is very similar. Aside from the property line setback has been dropped from at least a hundred feet to at least fifty feet per the feedback that we got on the McCandless and Me project in council discussion back in the fall. Since then, we've also reworked the formatting a bit. This, I I will happily go into more detail if anyone wants how that works, but the short version is we've split some things that were originally in the zoning ordinance into a update to the property maintenance and nuisance code, which is a different section of code. That's just essentially for enforcement efficiency. There are some things that should be enforced via zoning procedures versus property maintenance or civil issues. So again, if anyone has more questions about why, what, where, and why, you know, we put things where we did, happy to answer them. But in general, what you see here is largely the same as last time, just lowered setbacks, and those have been split for formatting issues.
So the enforcement would just be zoning stuff would be going to zoning, and then the code enforcement would be going, right, so that would be.
Right, right. So the ordinances could run concurrently, but there would just be different procedures for the zoning ordinance versus the nuisance ordinance.
Right, okay. Comments on these or questions? Councilmember Smith.
RJ, in in this version, the is the setback from the rear lot lines also fifty feet?
It is, yes.
Okay, and that cuts out quite a bit of properties, I'd I'd imagine. I'm trying to find the part in your well, I don't know if it's your memo now that I see.
The the big old chicken report, yeah, that was me.
Yeah.
So the McChicken report. So so we had about twenty people respond to the map activity on McCandless and Me marking this sort of, you know, I want chickens here on their property. Dropping it from a hundred to fifty would have allowed about half of the properties that were not previously able to meet the setbacks to do so.
And that includes the rear lot line.
Yes.
As one of the fifties, because I mean, my thought is the rear lot line could be more in line with, you know, the other depth restrictions we have that you mentioned for other animal enclosures. And I'm still partial to more like a thirty or thirty-five foot side lot line setback, but we can get into that some other time.
Are there any other comments? Yeah, councilmember Terrell.
RJ, the fifty-foot setback, that would be about a fifty-fifty split on the people that responded, correct? But like of the town as a whole, you're, what's your guesstimate if it was fifty feet? How many would that?
Um, it's really hard to give an accurate figure just because I don't have the lot widths, you know, on average at hand, but what I can say is our R2 district, which is the majority of the newly developed residential plans, has a minimum lot width of ninety feet. So unless that's a lot larger than, I'm sorry, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say the word lot, because I mean, lot is in property, not as in a lot. Um, anyway, for for a property that is larger than the minimum width, which is pretty common, the developers will do the minimum width when they come in. That would presumably not be able to fit a coop or a run structure because of the side setbacks. For the older lots that were developed in, you know, maybe the fifty-sixties, seventies potentially, those are on average closer to seventy-five feet. So using a fifty-foot setback would definitely limit it to those lots that were sort of developed or subdivided intentionally to be a little larger.
So you don't have a guesstimate on the number? Because I I I'm a little hesitant on this, and I want to move really slowly, and I want to have sort of test cases first. So that's why I'm trying to come up with it. We're trying to come up with a setback, and it's really to drive, for me, it's that, you know, what would get a small number of people allowed to do it? Let's see how that goes, and then we can go from there, so.
Yeah, I, we could work on the GIS math on that, but you know, just just might take a little time if we can pull it off.
So RJ, if somebody didn't meet the setbacks and was, is there an there's another alternative, isn't there? They can talk to their neighbors, and then they could go, right, and with their neighbors saying, oh, we love chickens too, and it's okay to change that setback. Is that, is that a possibility?
So what what you're referring to is the zoning variance application process. I would say, you know, I can't speak for the zoning hearing board in the way that they would vote or consider a case. However, usually the standard for something like this would be based on, do you have a unique condition of your lot? Whether it's topography or it's sighted in a strange way, or you have, you know, like a property line that does a weird jog into the side that you might have a better case to apply for a zoning variance. I would say that as if I was providing testimony to the zoning hearing board and someone just wanted to locate closer to a lot line because they weren't able to meet, you know, the legislation that that you all may pass. I would hesitate to recommend granting that variance unless there was a really unusual lot shape or topography. Because, you know, the the role of the zoning hearing board is to hear hardship cases or de minimis variances, which are just really tiny variances like a foot or two, rather than to alter the legislative intent of the ordinances the council may pass.
So how many feet would be de minimis?
Um, so the way that the zoning, you know, the state planning code defines it essentially is something that is so small that it doesn't affect the essential character of the neighborhood or the area. So you can't put an exact number on it because it's situational, but it's more thinking like, you've got a building footer that's five inches over the line. That's usually the kind of thing a de minimis is.
I didn't know if that was just an another avenue that possibly people could take.
They they could, but I would say there should be some actual topographical unusual circumstance of the property in this case, since this is new legislation.
Councilmember Smith?
I had a quick follow-up to councilmember Tarl's question. When you were talking about the fifty-foot setback, I think he asked about the side, the side lots, and you were talking about the width of the lot. But how often does the depth come into it? If you have any sense of that, because, I mean, I'm thinking a fifty-foot depth from the backyard is going to come into play just as much as a fifty-foot side lock depth will.
So the minimum rear yard at this point for the vast majority of our residential properties is forty feet. Now, what I tend to see in practice is because we have minimum square footage for lot sizes when they're subdivided, what you tend to get is these much larger, longer rectangular lots because they've got to hit the square footage minimum, but they don't want to make the lots wider than they have to be. They tend to have more, you know, depth to subdivide property out of than width. So depending on how the streets were laid out, that could come into play. If somebody had a minimum rear yard depth, then yes, they would not be able to meet this setback.
What is the, what is the square footage minimum for the lots?
Uh, I believe in the R2 district, which again is the vast majority now, it's twelve thousand square feet. So that's, yeah, not 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 too much less than a fourth of an acre.
So a lot of time, I mean, if you just go off of a hundred-foot width, you're talking about a hundred and twenty-foot depth.
Yes.
So you're probably, you're probably not going to have a fifty-foot clearance from the back lot line, given you have to set the house back so far from the front lawn or from the front, and then the house is obviously going to take up twenty feet, thirty feet.
I mean, the the front yard's thirty-five foot, so let's, you could, but they, I mean, it'd be a squeeze for a standard-sized lot.
Yeah.
Councilmember Clonan.
I'm just speaking from and from the eyes of a realtor in McCandless. Very quickly, I'm putting a different hat on here. Most of our lots are the the structure is set at the minimum back from the street, and we have the minimum side variances. The developers do use the minimum required for frontage and almost, I'd say seventy-five percent or better are sometimes even up to double long as they are wide coming from the street. So I I see this as as definitely, if there's going to be a problem with that fifty feet, it's coming from the side to side of the property, not to the rear of the home. And it is going to eliminate a lot of McCandless residents because of that.
Councilmember Swager.
I know from the residents who reached out to me, in my work particularly, we have narrow seventy-five foot is our width for all my, pretty much most of my neighborhoods. And these residents can't have a coop if we have a fifty-foot setback from the lot line. So I'm opposed to that. I still, since last summer, have said twenty-five feet. And, you know, again, if people, they've been around the coops and as we are, you know, we are requesting, they have to maintain them, they will not have odor. I know, because I have numerous family members who have them. So I know they can, that there's concern of odor, but as long as they're following the rules, maintaining them, there will not be any odor at all. So I still would suggest that we go with the twenty-five-foot setback from the lot line.
I liked councilmember Terrell's idea of, let's go with what we have and see how it goes, and if things go well, then we can change some of those setbacks. We can amend this and see how it goes, since this is kind of a new thing for us. And if it is no problem and if everything goes swimmingly, then maybe we can, we could change that in the future. It seems like a good idea to me. Any other comments? May I ask a question, Madam President? Absolutely, councilmember Spahnhold. I was just in reading, it was a very good report, by the way, RJ, I mean, the way you put it together. But at the end of the day, you worked with what you had, but it was with what nineteen and forty-nine, forty-five responded and nineteen responded with more information or something of that nature. So let's just say, in this scheme, no matter how you cut it, in the scheme of thirty-thousand-ish residents in McCandless that well, you know, it was it was great information that it wasn't what I would call highly representative of what McCandless residents might really want.
It it is more than we had before, but it is not a statistically valid sample.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, and I will say this as a councilperson, I struggle with this because I know there are people who are passionate about chickens, and it is their property, and I don't want to diminish their use of their property. On the other hand, we have residents who I've spoken to who are vehemently opposed. So I was just, I'm I'm not trying to delay this. I'm not trying to put, I I would just feel better if there is, is there a way to actually use the email addresses that we have? You know, that we send out McMail to, to send out a, obviously, we're not getting the response from Mc, you know, McCandless and Me or however we did this, to get a quick yes or no. Do you support chickens or do you, are you opposed to chickens? I, I don't know, I'm just asking, because.
Yeah, we we put it in the McMail edition that came out back when we did the engagement project, but I mean, that that was several months ago. So, and it was a pretty good website at that time.
Wondering if there was a way to get more, more insight, because I have to say I'm I'm struggling with it simply because I would say I have an equal number of people who have spoken to me that are opposed, probably more opposed in my case than those in who have reached out that want them, but I know the people who want them are passionate about it, and I don't want to necessarily hold them back. I just, you know, it's a democratic process, so. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Smith?
Just one comment and one question. Similar to before and and along the lines of what councilmember Spahnhold said or part of what she said. You know, I I generally have the view of less restrictions on property. That's just my overall view, as long as it's not negatively impacting other people. But then the question I had is, is there a way to do a pilot program without actually passing an ordinance? So that might, no, there's not, it has to.
Sorry, I'll just answer that now.
Okay.
But this ordinance can always be amended.
Yes.
So in fact, this could serve as a pilot, a pilot, and then if we decided at a later date to change the setbacks, then we could do that. So RJ, if we decided that we wanted to move forward with this, what would be the next step?
Um, so depending on how you procedurally prefer to do ordinance ads, you could either take a vote or a head nod. We would move forward to advertise the zoning ordinance portion for a public hearing again. We would also send it off to the county. Planning commission would have a chance to comment at their next meeting. For the nuisance portion, I believe that the charter's advertisement requirements for a Class C, I want to say, ordinance are much less stringent. But we could certainly run them at the same time. It wouldn't be subject to a public hearing, but that doesn't mean that you couldn't consider comments from the public, you know, regarding the content of the nuisance ordinance as well, which contains the cleanliness. And this is how you have to take care of your chickens, those kinds of kinds of regulations.
So this, there's not an option for a decision tonight?
No, we can't vote on on either of these tonight.
Right, right.
Right, right. So there's no decision tonight. So there, so there is time for more public comment. So we could still hit all of our social media sites. And invite more comment. We can't make people respond, but we can certainly give it, give them another chance.
Yes.
This is, would be another four weeks, probably anyway, right? Before this was come up for a public hearing.
Yes, at least.
Right, at least. Okay, so that does give us some time. So
Yes.
Um, we can take, um, ahead. If I get everybody's head look like it's not in the same way, we'll take that. If it looks like it's not, then we'll take a, a roll call vote um, on this. So do we want to go forward with a public hearing, getting more input? And start this, move this, um, process forward? Let me see some of the head nods. Okay, I got a Smith nod, I got a Clunin nod, I got a, I got a, uh, uh, Mike Terrell's against it. Okay. Then we're going to have to take a, um, a roll call vote then, because there's one, I changed. Bob, you want to do that?
Okay, word two.
Um, I apologize, but I'm not sure what I'm nodding about.
Should we advertise the ordinances as drafted?
Uh, then I would vote no. I would, I would like more broad community input.
And we would have at least another month to get that input before it came to a public hearing. And then we would have the public hearing to hear more public input.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to clarify with my question.
Okay.
I am, I am fine. I think we do have to move this forward to a conclusion. I just, as you said, I would like more, uh, and I'd like a, like, uh, some strenuous effort to get more community input, input.
And, and we do have a public hearing also. So we, we, we should, everybody should come out, wants to say something about chickens. All right, so that's word two. Anyone else have any questions? Anyone else have any questions before we go to vote? Councilmember Woods?
Yeah, this is a question from Mr. Corble. If we get to the point of having the public hearing and we're still split over this fifty, twenty-five, thirty, uh, setback, is that material? Like, would that make the whole process start over again?
Yeah, it would. If we change the zoning, uh, from fifty to twenty-five to thirty-five, that would be a material change. Would have to go back to the county for review.
I sort of feel like we ought to settle that now before we, uh, advertise again. So I'll just, I'll start. I'm, I'm no less than fifty at this point.
Okay, so do you want to move forward with what we have?
I do, yeah.
The motion. Okay, okay, okay. So that's word two, word three.
Uh, I'd say no, because I'm still not set on the setback. I think it should be even more than fifty. And coming to the point of, we want to try it in just a very few small instances to see how it works. And then we can always revisit it.
Okay, word four.
I'm, I'm a yes. I, I would like the, the, the distance to be less. Um, but I'm a yes, because we've been talking about this for a long time and we got to move it forward. We just do. And, um, so I'm a yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
So I'm, I could go either way, because I obviously think the setbacks should be to twenty-five feet for the sides. Um, so I, I guess I'll just say no at this point, because if we're not in agreement on that.
Word seven.
I'm sorry, I should have asked this earlier, but if, if we agree to the hearing and make the zoning change, will we need to go through the entire process, including a hearing to make an amendment? If after several months, this becomes a wild success and we can
Yes.
Start.
We do. Yes, you will have to.
Okay, um, I, I'm still going to say yes, right now, to move forward as it is.
Word one?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to confirm. Word two, Shelley, you said no, correct?
No, no.
You changed.
No, after further clarification, I said yes.
Okay. Okay, then the motion passes to move forward.
Okay, what was that? What was that? Uh, what was the score?
Five, five, two.
Okay.
Five, two at the bottom of the eighth.
At the bottom of the eighth, all right. All right, moving on to new business. Um, RJ, you want to give us a little? These should be, these should be pretty easy. Can you give us a little?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm still up, huh? All right, let me, uh, let me send a microphone and camera request to the applicant. I don't know if we'll need him to provide any additional information, but he's here. Um, so this, this first item under new business is for a lot consolidation application um, for Mr. Greg Lucott. He is located on Tyler Street. Um, essentially what happened here is Mr. Lucott was moving forward with looking to get a pool installed and discovered that his property that has been functioning as one property for the entire time he's owned it, is actually three separate tax parcels, which, uh, makes zoning more or less impossible to evaluate, when you're trying to put a pool in a backyard across three parcels. So this application has a clean engineer's review letter. Everything is code compliant. Um, he just needs to consolidate the lots to be able to use his rear yard as one single property.
Are there any questions for RJ? This is pretty simple. It's his property. He just wants it to be one tax bill. And build a pool where we're all going to this summer.
You're all invited.
See, we, we got this, I got this agreed to in planning already, too.
Lucky thing he said that when the attorney wasn't on.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
Madam President?
Uh, Councilmember Woods, would you read the motion, please?
Be happy to. I move to approve the preliminary final lot consolidation application for the looseup plan of lots submitted by MDM Surveyors and Engineers LLC as reviewed by Gateway Engineers in a letter dated three thirty-one twenty-one and as recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, currently known as Lot and Blocks six one one dash A dash one five five, comma, one five six and one eight zero.
Second.
Questions or comments again? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you all very much, RJ. Thank you for your help.
Yep, we will, uh, have the building department coordinate with you to make sure everything's, uh, pre-processed, so you can still hit your install date.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Um, RJ, can you give us a, um, summary of our next one also? Should be a pretty easy one, too.
Yes, so again, I have sent the applicant a mic and camera request, just in case he needs to add anything. Uh, but the, the simple version is there are quite, quite a few lots um, in, in this sort of general area around, um, the intersection of Old Villa Drive. And I believe it's Babcock. Don't have it in front of me right now.
It is.
All right. So, so the intersection of Old Villa Drive and Babcock, there are two property owners, six parcels collectively between them. Um, they, they are looking to, uh, consolidate a couple parcels into three total. Um, one parcel would be owned by the applicant that we have on, on the meeting right now. Uh, he's also buying a little bit of, I think, his neighbor's backyard. Um, and then the remaining two parcels from consolidation would go to the second property owner involved in this. The Ray out of the Ray Jones. Um, again, code compliant, clean engineering review letter. This one's good to go, um, pending council vote.
Are there any questions? When you look at the drawing, it looks pretty confusing, but when you hear the, what it actually is, it's pretty clear cut. Okay, all right. Um, if there are no questions, is there someone who would like to read the motion? Councilmember Clunin?
I move to approve the preliminary final lot line revision and consolidation application for the Ray Jones Plan of Lots submitted by Tate Engineering, as reviewed by Gateway Engineers in a letter dated three twenty-nine of twenty-one and as recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. The lot and blocks to be altered or consolidated via this plan include one three five two dash P dash two oh three and two oh seven, one three five two dash P dash two oh nine and two one one and one three five two dash P dash two two seven and two three nine.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Swager. A second chance for questions or comments? Dr. Jones, you're smiling already. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, Council. And RJ, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, um, see? Um, RJ, can you, uh, give us a little summary of that?
Actually, I'll, I'll step in on this one.
Yes.
Okay, the, uh, we received a letter from Gateway Engineers following a final site inspection that Gateway conducted, uh, with Mark Sabina prior to his retirement. Regarding all of the improvements that were required, uh, per the approved plan for building, proposed building addition at Schultz Ford. All of the installed improvements have been completed and done so in, um, accordance with the town requirements. And therefore Gateway recommended full release of any remaining financial security that was in place for the, the project. And this was all financial security related to onsite improvements, not, uh, public improvements.
Questions? Okay, hearing none. Um, would someone like to, I'm calling for the motion? Councilor Smith?
I'll move to approve Schultz Ford bond release per Gateway Engineers' recommendation.
Uh, second. Okay, Councilmember Swager. Second call for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Um, a little summary on the lengthy planning module. It was in our packet. Bob, are you taking this or is this?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this one, too. Um, because I, when you think of sewage, I want you to think of me. This is, um, another piece of the approval puzzle for the fastener farms plan. And, uh, it's a requirement from the Department of Environmental Protection and Alka-San. Part of a review of the sanitary sewer system for capacity of our sewer system, as well as Alka-San's capacity to accept the sewage coming from the plan. So this has been reviewed and approved by MTSA and Alka-San. And essentially what we're all saying in this is that the, the sewer system in the town has the capacity to accommodate, uh, the houses being planned in the fastener farms plan of lots.
It looks like M, MTSA's pipes are gonna transport this, but it's going to Alka-San for treatment? Is that?
That's correct.
That is, okay, that's, that's how it looked to me. Okay, good.
Yes. I could tell you the whole direction that goes, but I won't bore you.
I, I saw a pump station. I, I, I read the whole thing.
That's all you need to do is see it one time.
That's right. Um, I, I also noted that the municipal planning review part was not filled out on that.
Well, we'll fill that out upon the approval.
Is that, okay, okay. I wasn't sure if that needed to be filled out first and then we approve it. Okay, after we, okay, yeah. All right, I wasn't sure about that. Okay, any other questions? Okay. All right, um, I'm calling for the motion then.
I'll move.
Okay, Councilmember Spawnholtz?
Move to approve your planning module for fastener farms plan.
Second.
Uh, Councilmember Smith, all the, all the, all the pictures changed.
Yep, that was me.
All right, uh, second call for questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, all right, um, we gotta, go ahead, Bob. We got an excavator that's already in the budget. Go ahead.
Um, and if you can recall the discussions that we took, that we held during the budget process, we did budget funds, um, for the excavator or excavator work. Historically, the town has, um, used, uh, the services of an excavator, uh, company, an individual with an excavator, uh, through bid process. And, uh, we consequently, this year, decided that we would look at alternatives, whether we would continue a um, contract like that, uh, rather we would try to lease, uh, or rent a, a piece of equipment for a week or two, or however we thought, however long, a month, however long we thought that we might need it. We looked at used equipment and, um, finally settled on the fact that, um, this, we, we downsize the size of the excavator. Were able to bring it within budget. And what we will do is, um, as a result of this purchase, we will then, uh, sell off one of the backhoes that the town has, because it will then turn, make us a little more versatile in what we, um, we have available to us, along with some other pieces of equipment, such as a, uh, a hammer attachment that currently goes on our backhoe. So we'll get a, a slightly smaller, uh, hammer attachment that will work better for us, that could go on a backhoe or this excavator. So we're going to make some trades, but, uh, the cost of this first move for the Kubota is sixty-seven to sixty-seven per this, uh, joint contract.
Any questions for Mr.?
Within budget, within budget.
Right, within budget. Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion? Councilmember Woods?
I move to approve the purchase of a Kubota excavator from M and R Power Equipment in the amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars, sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty cents per Sourceville contract number zero six two one one seven.
Second. Doctor Clunin? Again, any questions? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, a little summary of, um, F. Really, this is what we do instead of having to dig up our pipes in our streets. It's a huge cost saving, even though it seems ridiculously expensive. In the long run, it saves us a whole lot of money. Is that pretty well a summary, Bob?
That is a terrific summary, Madam President.
Okay, all right. Um, any, any, any more questions? You have to ask Bob, but that's, is that it?
And I, I think, um, the, the summary that Jeff prepared shows you just how much we're going to be installing by size of pipe, so, um, again, it, it's a more cost-effective way of approaching these, uh, upgrades.
There are no questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Uh, Councilmember Clunin, would you read, read the motion, please?
I move to approve a contract with inside pipe for storm sewer pipelining in the amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars per CoStar's contract number sixteen.
Second, okay, Councilmember Swager. All right, second chance for questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. The next item is discussion of having a The next item is discussion of having a liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank um councilmember Woods for an outstanding um and thorough, concise report that she um turned into everyone about her meeting. Um, that she had with the chamber, as well as um her recommendation. Um. And um, are there, is anyone like to open up the discussion or ask questions for, to councilmember Woods, or?
May I just give a little background, Madam President?
Absolutely, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Uh, so this came out of a discussion with the um University of Pittsburgh students who are working on the Capstone Project with the EAC. I was in, in one of the meetings with them, and they talked about talking to somebody in the chamber, so I reached out to uh Beth Machine. Who is the executive assistant for the chamber and just to make a introduction. And she uh informed me about, you know. Made an appeal for the town to be more involved, and so that's how this discussion started. And seeing as we have recently eliminated two committees of council. And are working on eliminating a third, um, it seemed like we had a little. Free space to do something like this, and I think it's a good way to support the businesses in McCandless right now. If you have any questions, Beth has actually agreed to be at the meeting here. She'd be happy to answer.
I appreciate your doing this. Excuse me. Um, this seems like it might be a very good idea, particularly with the towns. The, it's timely and with the town's interest in supporting um our local businesses. Any uh comments or questions from any council members? Uh. Councilmember Clooney?
Thank you. Uh, I just want to say I'm full, full support of our council being represented. And uh, actually surprised that we weren't already, and I'm looking forward to, I'm also a member of chamber, and I think it's the. Pittsburgh North Chamber we have is a very great opportunity for the small businesses in our community to take advantage of a lot of education. And programming and networking and things like that, and I'm happy to see our council supporting it if we can.
Um, are there any other comments? Councilmember Tarrell?
Uh, I'm supportive of it. I think that we, we, we hear McCandless need to continue being known as a business-friendly. Uh, climate and any way we can, you know, help support our local businesses. I'm, I'm all for it.
Um, town attorney, is this something we can decide with a nod? Do we need a formal motion? Do, what do we need here to make this happen? If someone, if we decide to make it happen, what do we need?
I, I would go for a formal motion at this point.
Okay, all right, just, just seeing which way we need to um head if we're gonna head that way, because it sounds like we have some good support here. Any other questions or comments? Okay, um, do we have, um, is there a motion?
Would you like me to read it?
Um. Uh, there, well, there's, there's, there, you'll have to make it up. There's not one to read.
That's, I'm gonna make it up, yeah.
Yeah.
Make it up. Okay.
Hey, councilmember Swagger?
Okay, so move to create um a liaison position to the Chamber of, uh, Chamber of Commerce.
Is that, is that good enough, Dave? Okay, got a minute to drink. Um, second?
Second.
Okay, Mike Tarrell? All right, any other questions? Anything for Beth? I think this is a good opportunity for us. I think um this might help get us going in a direction. Um, good direction, okay? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, I would like to appoint Mike Tarrell to be the uh council liaison. And I'll let him meet with Beth and find out the times and um look forward to getting his reports from um. The Chamber of Commerce.
Perfect.
Great, thank you so much. Um. Where are we here? Discussion, we did that. All right, H. Um. Technology Committee. Okay, um, we have a motion here. It can, is someone, would someone make the motion here?
Madam President?
Thank you.
I move to accept the resignation of Scott Schiffkins from the Technology Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, I think councilmember Spahnhold was there. All right, um. We are so appreciative of our um members of the community who volunteer to be on our boards and our committees. And our authorities, and sometimes life just gets in the way of service, and we understand that. So um while we are sorry, always sorry to lose someone before the end of their term, we certainly understand. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, um, the resignation um is accepted. Is there any other business? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, councilmember Smith, I think you are first. Second?
Second.
All right, spot, councilmember Spahnhold's. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Night.
Night.
Thank you, everyone.